And I'm going to ask Commissioner Singleton to open us up with prayer.
Good morning. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful weather. Lord, we thank you for the sunshine and the rain when it comes. Lord, we just thank you for these residents of Montgomery County. A special prayer for the family of Farrell Duncan, who we laid to rest on Saturday, a man that had such a great legacy here in Montgomery in helping folks. Lord, just ask you to bless us today and as a county commission and all our county employees, that today all our decisions will be in the best interest of every resident in Montgomery County. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Okay. Florence?
We'll go over our visitors for today. First, we'll have a report from City County EMA. I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning. Christie's not here today because she's at the National Hurricane Conference. So I'm going to share the numbers with you. First of all, Christie and I wanted to make sure that you guys understand the numbers that we're receiving now, the information gathering individuals that do the databases for us and everything like that. The numbers are coming in slower and a lot of them just are not reporting numbers. So over the last 14 days, we've had 48 cases of positive as far as COVID, but we've had 3,900 individuals be tested. Those individuals, though, a lot of those are for the universities. A lot of the auxiliaries and bands and things like that at the universities have set standards where those individuals that are going to be involved in that have to have either the vaccine or COVID testing each week. And along with that, it's a lot of the medical procedures now is what we're seeing because of everything opening up. Before they do, a lot of the procedures now, they're doing a COVID test on those patients. As far as the vaccine itself, we have 133,547 individuals in the county that have either had their first dose or totally completed the whole cycle as far as the vaccine. So that's basically where we're at right now with that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our other visitors today are Sheriff Cunningham, Grant Manager Regina Walker, Elections Director Darrell Parker, Manager of Public Affairs Hannah Hawke, Hayward Hosh with Maynard Cooper and Gale, President of Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce and Executive Director Anna Buckaloo and Ashley Jernigan. For an update on chamber activities, lobbyist Cassandra Crosby and Ron Drinkard, Executive Director Donna Leslie with the Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority, and Ms. Barbara Mays. The items to be considered on our agenda are Amendment Number Two to the contract with Mid-South Paving for high-performance asphalt coal patch, Amendment Number Two to a contract with Wiregrass Construction Company for plant mix, client services agreement with Arthur Gallagher Risk Management Services partnering with Stark Agency for property and liability insurance broker services, a district office lease for U.S. Representative Terry Sewell, a bid award to Keefe Commissary Network for commissary and trust fund management, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Does anyone have anything to add?
Come back to that. I know I have something.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Are there any additions there? Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. There is an additional 2,500 to Kids to Love Foundation for Montgomery foster families from Commissioner Walker.
While we on that part. Oh, that's, oh, that's, I heard that again. Okay. Bug Masters, how do we fund Bug Masters the last time? We used to go and do that because it's coming, it's real close to front of us. I know it's 42,500. Cheryl, how did we fund it the last time?
I don't remember.
Say what?
It was a budget change.
Well, we just need to go and agree to do it today because it's running, running out of town. I know that.
Are they coming back, Mr. Chairman, this year?
Bug Masters all every year.
They, I mean, I'm talking with COVID and all. I was just wondering.
Oh, yeah, they're coming back this year. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Question is the amount?
Forty-two.
Yeah.
Forty-two five.
Forty-two five. We done this for how many years? I guess probably six, seven? Every year pretty much.
I had just asked that we pull what we had done the past five years.
Okay, all right, okay.
You want us to go on?
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Consider a budget change, Number Four, for the county commission appropriations. Consider budget change request, Number Five, for the engineering department. Consider budget change request, Number Two, for the personnel department. Consider budget change request, Number Two, for the recreation board. Consider budget change request, Number Six, for the sheriff's office. Consider position fill request for the detention facility for corrections officer trainee. Consider position fill request for the engineering department for a civil engineering tech three. Consider position fill request for the revenue commissioner's office for a revenue examiner. Consider position fill request for the sheriff's office for a public safety communications dispatcher. Consider travel training requests for appraisal, personnel, and risk management.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had a concern about budget change request, Number Four.
Okay.
First of all, let me just say that I certainly support the chamber and all their endeavors to bring businesses, increase tourism, and hopefully that will trickle down to the communities that I represent in terms of increasing their quality of life. But this money is supposed to come from the American Rescue Plan Fund, and I don't think we've had enough discussion on that in terms of how the county proposes to spend that $43 million. We don't have any budgets. A lot of that, well, all the money rather, had to do with a certain formula that the Treasury used. And of course, communities of color weighed heavily in that, low-income communities, communities of poverty, and particularly those communities that had been negatively or disproportionately impacted by COVID. And so the Treasury strongly recommends that the commission and any other governmental entity engage their constituents in terms of the money and having discussions about, you know, just what projects might benefit them. And so to that degree, I'm having some concerns about why we are allowing the chamber to have first dip into that part of money when we could fund it from a different source. It seems to be somewhat offensive for those who are still, you know, bearing the brunt of this virus, not to at least have had some input before we decide to spin from that particular source. So I would just like the commission to really think about that. And I'm hoping that at some point, we can have some type of hearing so that we can decide on an intelligent way to spend this money. I know one of our commissioners was concerned that we ought to do something very meaningful and impactful so that, you know, we can move forward in terms of the future and being prepared to do things that mitigate impacts of this virus and other pandemics that might be forthcoming and enhance the quality of life in a meaningful way as opposed to just spending it, you know, arbitrarily for various requests. So I would ask that we maybe consider getting it from a different source until we've had time to really engage the community and develop a budget in terms of how to spend this money.
Any other comment on that?
I agree with Commissioner Sankey. I'm the one that he quoted. I want us to be very thoughtful. I know we all want us to be very thoughtful with how we spend the money. I would encourage the commission that we engage some level of expertise to advise us on the cans and can'ts with this money, what we can do and what we cannot do. I'm not saying we have to have somebody for long term. Maybe they just come in and advise us once and sit down with us as a commission and help us thoroughly understand our options. And then I like Commissioner Sankey's idea of, once we have a discussion, then bringing in the public for ideas. But yeah, I want the five of us to sit down and really think through what we want to do with this money to make it, to have the most meaningful impact. Because I agree with Commissioner Sankey, I don't want us to nickel and dime this money away.
Yes, sir. Yes, upside.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything that I disagree with. I too, I have a pretty decent general understanding of the limits, looking at the guidelines the Treasury produced, but I think we need someone to come in who really knows what the limits are and what we can spend it on. I too agree that we should do something, plan to do something, really that we wouldn't have been able to do had we not gotten this money, something transformative, something that we can all sit down and talk about. And in preparation of that, because I'm also in agreement with what Commissioner Sankey has said, we need input from our constituency. And what I've already started to do so that whenever we, as a commission, get together and start talking about things, I've already, in attending neighborhood association meetings, I've let them know that we have the money and that while it's not clear what we can spend the money on, what we're going to spend it on is going to be beneficiary to the entire county, to everybody. And to be thinking about what you need for your community, to make your community better, so that we can get some ideas. I can have some ideas in terms of what my constituency expects and what they need and what some of their needs. But yes, I agree. We need to really know, you know, exactly what we can spend this money on as best we can. And to really try to do something that we wouldn't have been able to do had we not gotten the money.
Mrs. Singleton?
Well, I know there's, as Ben, an option would be to partner with our fellow city council people to maybe have some type of expert come in and kind of help us navigate through this money. So that is on the table, whether we want to partner with the city of Montgomery. Keep in mind, we do town to Pike Road and unincorporated areas too, but partner with the city of Montgomery on a joint type of expert consultant. So that is on the, in question, whether we want to do that or if we want to do it on our own.
Have they already engaged someone?
No.
No.
No. There was one person who came and did a, just a general information type session one day, very knowledgeable lady, very engaged with federal. I was very impressed with her, but I'm sure there's dozens others out there that have knowledge or will have more knowledge than we do. So I do agree, we do need somebody to help us navigate this. But the question is, do we want to partner with our fellow city council people who, because all of us serve three or four or five city council districts. So do we want to combine with them or we want to do it on our own?
I like the idea of combining so far as the information session. And so we're all hearing the same information at the same time. We all know what our options are, but, you know, not combining, you know, pots of money per se, but definitely combining ideas or getting one consultant and having the city, the county, Pike Road, all the entities in Montgomery County who have some of these funds to hear the same information. Then if we decide to do joint projects, I'm, you know, open to that idea. But I like the idea of all of us getting together and hearing the same thing at the same time. So it sounds like we have a lot of agreement as far as how to handle this, the rescue plan funds. Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, just in the vein of agreement amongst the commission, that we don't touch these funds until we have more knowledge and at least a loose plan for how we're going to spend them. That said, I would recommend that we take the monies that the chamber has requested from our designated revenue.
Oh, no.
Hold on a second. There does an ambiguity in here too. Doug, what Doug is talking about and what I was talking about are two different things. Maybe one entity or one consultant can handle them both. What, one aspect of it is maximizing the benefit of the funds. In other words, if we were going to spend money on a broadband project and discover that the state also has money and we can partner with the state, that's one aspect of it. And the other, and the really one that could get you locked up is spending it on somebody's driveway when you shouldn't. So we need to, we need to, the other aspect is knowing what it is we can spend the money on.
Absolutely.
So you can't spend it on, so, now that might be one entity, but those are two separate things that we have to nail down in order to make sure that we're doing it right. So I want to have that understanding. I don't have a problem with utilizing the same entity that the city uses. We can partner with them to get that information personally. In addition to talking to my constituents, I've also spoken with a couple of the council people that represent districts within my district about projects that we can do together. So I'm not against that. I mean, that's a great opportunity because it maximizes what we have and what we can do. But I just wanted to make sure that ambiguity was clear, you know.
Yeah, I agree with you. So the first step is we've got to engage a consultant. Is there agreement that we want to get with Montgomery Pike Road?
Let's go back to, Mr. Sankey's concern at first, and I think that we can pull this money from somewhere else other than the designated fund. What, we didn't have the rescue money. Where were we getting this money from, Cheryl, from the chamber?
Designated revenue.
Huh?
Designated revenue.
What designated revenue?
The joint.
This right.
Well, no, we got more money than that, y'all. Come on. This is, this is a gift to us. This is a gift to us to go around this county, to spread it out throughout the county, not to spread it, give the chamber a lot of salt, not this money. So where is the other money that we can use out of the budget?
But Mr. Chairman, the American Recovery Act money specifically goes to projects like this. And if we, if we don't use American Recovery Act and we decide to use it from designated, designated has limitations on what we can use that money for. American Recovery Act does not. Now, I do agree with Commissioner Sankey that we don't need to start nickel and diamond and doing stuff, but if we're going to do this for the chamber, then we need to do it out of American Recovery Act money and not out of our discretionary money.
I disagree with that.
Can I speak to that just briefly? And the reason we want to use that first is, you know. Want to use what first? The American Recovery. I mean, you got 44 million to spend. If you go over, if we have more projects to spend, we can always spend the 118,000 from where we might have used the 118 later, which is, it could be that if lodging taxes continue, they're on an upward trend right now, we budget 21% of that. So it may have extra revenue that we could use it just to make up for, you know, lodging tax, I mean, payments to the chamber on that. And I also just wanted to remind you too, that part of the American Recovery allows you to recapture lost revenue. I'm working, there's a formula. I'm working on a trend to see, in other words, if we came up and said our lost revenue, based on that was a million dollars, the million dollars comes out of the 44 million and can go to the funds that lost the revenue. I just want to remind you of that.
Chairman, I understand what Chris Sankey said, but I see no problem. It's almost like getting money and you already have a shovel-ready project. You know that you're going to spend the money on that project. And the types of things that he's talking about, we don't have anything shovel-ready. If we did, bring them up and we could do, they could be considered. But we know we can spend money on economic development and this is, that's listed among the things that we can spend it on.
I agree with that. That's what I was saying.
I mean, I'm just clarifying. And I understand what he's saying, you know, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're prioritizing the chamber over anything else. It just means that this is a shovel-ready project that we're going to, that the money can be spent on, that we're going to spend it on anyway. And let's do it. There might be some others. The sheriff is one department that I can think of that could come up with something tomorrow that we know we're going to spend the money on. It's not a matter of putting it before that. But if we have something that's shovel-ready, something that, for the community, we can start that. But now, having said all that, we still need to be on the same accord.
Yeah, and certainly, I think we need more guidance. Now, speaking of shovel-ready, I'm not sure. It's a project, it's for economic development. Sure, economic development, tourism was part of the Treasury guidelines. They approved that. But we don't know specifically just how to go about that. I mean, sewer, water and sewer was very clear, but we're still talking about whether or not we can do this, that, or the other. When we lay the other sewer, if indeed we get to that point, can we take it to the person's house? So we are unclear on that. So why are we so clear now on this particular, what Commissioner Harris referred to as a shovel-ready project, when we're not clear on exactly what we can do moving forward?
Where were you? They came in here and laid out the whole plan.
No, I remember that. I'm simply saying.
And they told you what it was going to come. Now, I don't recall anybody coming in here, laying out a plan to put sewer systems in anywhere in this county.
All I'm saying, Commissioner Harris, that we hadn't, we haven't talked about just how we're going to use the money. And we need more input from constituents in terms of how the money is going to be used.
I understand that. But I'm talking about, when you say something, say it clearly and factually and back it up. You, I said shovel-ready and that was, just a phrase.
Okay, well, if that's what you mean. I don't want to be argumentative about it. They presented it. They did present it, yeah.
This is on the agenda today. When it comes up, I vote, you either voted up or voted down.
And meanwhile, Mr. Chairman, can we ask our administrator to identify this person that Doug referenced that was a consultant, that we might be able to engage them, find out where the city is, if they've made any movement toward engagement? That, I think that needs to be a quick priority for us to get this. I mean, we're not going to, we're not in a hurry to spend the money. We want to do it wisely, but I think we're in a hurry to learn.
I don't see why our legislative delegation from DC, with all the expertise they have within their offices, I don't see why they could not have some input as well so that we don't end up spending a lot of money with consultants. I mean, that's what they're there for. They were right there with the Treasury, and they have certainly the connections to be able to give up some feedback on how to move forward. So I would encourage us to certainly contact Representative Sewell's office and our senators and other representatives there in Washington so that they can call upon their staff and the expertise that they have to help us get where we need to be.
Okay. You just mentioned that. Let me let people know that Representative Sewell Mama passed away last week, so. Okay. Be having a prayer. Okay. Okay, so let's move on.
With regard to Bug Masters, those came from fund balance last year.
Okay.
I mean, do you want to add that to this year or, I mean, to this meeting or?
We, we can waive rules if that's okay.
Or it could also come from?
Fund balance, okay. I mean.
In-house appropriations.
Y'all just said we didn't have no money a few minutes ago. Y'all said we didn't have no money. All of a sudden, all these funds that we got. See, I know about it. Okay. Want to waive rules? Can anybody?
What are we waiving rules on?
Bug Masters appropriation. They stuck a bit of COVID bad shit, so they're coming back like everybody else is. You hear me?
And where's that money coming from?
Fund balance.
Not from Rescue Plan.
I'm fine with waiving rules.
Okay. All right.
All right, I'm sorry. We'll now hear from Sheriff Cunningham.
Hey, good morning. Tuesday's morning.
You have a bid award to Eagle Group for polo shirts for the sheriff's office.
Is that what you're wearing here? Is that an example of what? Okay. See what you're doing.
Next agenda.
And you have a bid award to furnish personal protective equipment and related supplies for the sheriff's office. And Regina Walker has some grant application requests.
Okay. Yes, we have two grants that we need your permission to pursue. Does it matter which order I go in Florence?
No.
Okay. The first one is Alabama 911 Board. They help with communication centers for law enforcement agencies. There is no cash match. You can't, I'm sorry. There is no cash match with Alabama 911 Board, and that grant is due September 1st.
How much is that?
That, well, they don't really put, they don't have a limit on the ceiling, but a nice safe range is somewhere around 50 to 75,000. That's usually where we try to be. The second one is a de-escalation grant to the DOJ COPS office, and we are looking at upgrading our current virtual system as well as acquiring a virtual reality mobile training unit that we can take around the state and train other agencies on de-escalation and use of force skills. That's a $200,000 grant with no match. That's okay.
You want to, Regina? Chair. This is training for all patrol?
Yes, for everybody.
Everybody.
Yeah, everybody.
And that's it.
And so that can go on the next agenda.
Thank you.
All right, we'll hear now from Director of Elections, Darryl Parker, regarding a waive rule, item number one.
Morning, Commissioners. Before you is the, before you is the memorandum of understanding with the city to conduct their special election for the District One Council seat. We asked for the waive rule because it was just returned to us last week, Thursday, from the city.
When did they get it?
Last month.
I recommend we, we do waive rules on this.
I don't have a objection.
We've got to.
No objection on that.
Thank you.
We'll hear from Hannah Hawke.
Before they leave, if you all called, y'all were talking about some big warehouse thing, y'all were talking about that.
Not, not this meeting, sir. We, we have to get on the agenda for that, and so we'll, we'll look at getting on the agenda on the next county meeting. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Good morning, I don't have much to talk about, but just wanted to briefly go over the fact that we had the groundbreaking for the Montgomery Whitewater, which was a great success, so we are so thankful that it's there. And I have a quick video if I can sign on. And here we go.
Water, a necessity for survival. It sustains us. It moves us. It connects us, especially in the river region. And now, its ever-flowing current will soon be channeled to create a new vibrancy in Montgomery County. Introducing Montgomery Whitewater, visible from the I-65, I-85 corridor, perched along the Alabama River. The one-hundred-and-twenty-acre world-class whitewater center will feature a man-made recirculating river producing waves, from ripples to rapids, fresh, clean water for all to enjoy and experience. A reimagining of what it means to be a place where flowing water brings out new life and new opportunities. A new wave that will sustain us for generations to come. The story of your adventure starts here. Trails connecting the natural world to an outdoor community center, activated by sights, sounds, and experiences that turn memories of Montgomery into a flow of tourism and economic impact. Montgomery Whitewater, connecting us all by breathing new life into the area's natural setting, securing the success story of our river region for future generations. Join us. Our story starts now.
So hopefully that gives people a little bit better understanding of what Montgomery Whitewater is, and if you noticed, you saw your girl waving after you just briefly.
On the, on the zip, that was you on the zip line?
That was me, yes.
The, the groundbreaking event was, was excellent. I know y'all put in a lot of work, the chamber put in a lot, a lot of groups put in a lot of work to make that event, but thank y'all, I know it was a tremendous amount of work on our staff, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next, we will hear from Hayward Hush regarding the town of Pike Road school tax.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Hayward Hush on behalf of the Pike Road Board of Education with respect to a proposed resolution for the commission for hopefully adoption at the next meeting. This resolution is in furtherance of a process that has begun some months ago to allow a vote in the city of Pike Road for a new school district tax that would just be levied and collected in Pike Road. This is a constitutional process that we must go through. Step one was to have that tax, the vote, proposed by this commission, which you did on March 16th. Then the legislature has passed an act approving it, and now it's time to call the vote, and the Board of Education has adopted a resolution requesting the commission to call the election on October 5th, 2021. And that is in pursuance of the original proposal and the Act of the Legislature. So this resolution that you have before you will call the election and then approves the, some of the details, the ballot, the notice, that type of thing. Election is only in Pike Road, and they are requesting October 5th, 2021. And happy to answer any questions.
Yes, so I, 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 I guess a lot of this language is kind of held over from the Board of Education, but in the section 3.02, general authorizations of officers, the commission, we don't have any officers. We authorize our chairman to, to be our senior tour and spokesperson. So I don't know, I don't know where that language come from. I've never seen it, I've never seen it in language. That, the, the, the commission would authorize the chairman to do this, we don't have officers.
Very well, we'd be happy to change that, and I'll, I'll resubmit it to Ms. Coffin.
And in Article Four in general, this may be also just something you threw in, but what, what, what are we repealing? What, what, I don't, I don't recall anything that we have in effect, and if we do, I'd like to be made aware of it, that, that this provision applies to and that would repeal.
It is a general provision that makes sure that there's, if, if there is anything that this would supersede it, so the election may go forward. But I mean, I'm happy to amend that, or, or we could even.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know what we're superseding, if we're superseding anything. If we're not superseding anything, we don't need the provision, but if we are, I really would like to know.
Oh, we know of nothing, sir, in particular. It is a, it is a general provision. Yes, sir, it's in there because it's in everything we do in order to preserve the integrity of the action we are, we are requesting, to make sure that there's nothing in the past without an exhaustive search of the record, but I can't imagine there's anything. I'm happy to take it out if it raises a concern.
I think it's you coming out.
Okay. We can do that, it will be fine.
We support what you're doing.
Very good.
We don't want to kill anything else in that process.
We'll be glad to make that change, sir.
All right.
Is that it, Mr. Chairman? Thank you all very much, we'll see you in two weeks then. Thank you.
Before we go on to hear from our remaining visitors, might want to consider item number seven, the county classification and pay study. As we discussed at the preliminary budget review after the last meeting.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, I support the recommendation.
Cheryl's here, if you've got any questions.
Anybody got any questions?
I don't.
So we support, we support it.
So that can go on the next agenda. Thank you.
Call the sheriff's office for some order in this room.
Next, we'll hear from Anna Buckle with the Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce, and Ashley Jernigan with Experience MGM.
Dammit, can I have some help down here?
Is your internet not working?
I just, I did something, I think I touched something.
Mine's still loading. Have we got that? Every time I click on something, it just spins. I need to get broadband here when we get it.
Good morning, and thank y'all so much for giving us this time. Before I begin to give you an update on our tourism project and a few other things, I appreciate the invitation to come and be with you this morning, and I want to commend you, A, congratulate you on Whitewater. Your leadership got us here, you have created a new icon in this community for all of our citizens, and it will drive tourism and economic prosperity for all Montgomeryans, and just wouldn't be here without the county commission, so thank you for that. Also want to commend you for your discussion on these ARP funds. You're, you're very wise and thoughtful to think about these in terms of how to make the most impact for your communities and your constituencies, so I commend you for that, and we look forward to being part of that process in terms of economic development, those kind of projects that will drive those kinds of progress and job creation and economic impacts in your, in your districts and communities. That said, in terms of the funding for the tourism initiative that I'm about to kind of give you an update on, and Ashley also, I will just tell you that whatever is helpful to the commission, if it's best to defer on that just a little while until you have a better sense of the funding, the, the chamber is going to do this tourism fund, this startup plan, we have to, to get our economy back, so I'll just share that with you, and you'll see in this presentation a little bit about a downtown plan that our foundation is funding because of the importance we think it plays in supporting Whitewater and other developments. Again, a thank you to the commission. We are, again, the second year in a row, one of the top twenty economic development organizations in this country, that's your award, that's your award and the city's award. You make it possible, so thank you so much. Montgomery is getting a lot of national recognition. A quick dashboard, some of you have seen this, our project activity, this is what y'all would call Ellen's World, is strong this year. I mean, we are seeing amazing activity, and already sixty-three million dollars in investment, four hundred direct jobs from industry projects. We've, we're working almost a hundred active projects right now, and have made more industry calls and visits already this year than we typically do in almost an entire year, almost a hundred. And just a quick heads up, I'll come back to you with some updates as we get ready for the Air Force Information Technology Conference, it will be back this year. I'd love for y'all to hear from Sharice Stokes, who leads this effort. It will be kind of a hybrid conference this year, but we think we'll have a good bit of people in hotel rooms, and so how we make this impression for this conference this year with the Air Force in terms of Montgomery as a tech hub is very important, so we're going to make sure we roll out the red carpet for our Air Force partners this year. Your investment in the tech lab and the accelerator program made a big difference, it's gotten us on the right trajectory, and I think some of you had seen the notice about Birmingham landed a big company, I think Landing is the name of it. It came through a tech accelerator ecosystem that they started in Birmingham, and that's what we're building here, those are the kind of companies we want to bring back. So let's talk about tourism. Mr. Chairman, how much time do I have? Do I have five minutes?
Yeah.
That, I'm gonna try to fly through this, and I'd be happy to go through this in more detail with you, but I thought it would be helpful for you to see the marketplace, and I, I know Commissioner Harris and, and some of you probably saw some of this at the board meeting, so I'm only going to hit the high points, kind of what our market in, in tourism looks like pre-COVID. Just as a snapshot, we have fifty-three hotel motel properties in the, in the county, we have over five thousand, slightly over five thousand rooms, and it's interesting, we have over two hundred now active Airbnb-type properties, that's a growing segment of our market. The development that's taking place up on Court Street with the Grove Court Apartments, they will have almost twenty Airbnb units in that project, so that's good reinvestment in Montgomery. Just an occupancy trend, you know, pre-COVID, we were really heading up in terms of occupancy. You all remember us talking about leading the state. When COVID hit us, it hit us hard, you know, almost a fifty percent decline, but still, if you can see this chart, we still have been consistently above the national average in terms of occupancy. So a strong tourism footprint here and the potential to grow this market is tremendous for Montgomery. This is important because, and, and I've put hard copies up here for y'all to take with you, supply and demand is something we watch carefully in the tourism industry. Our supply, that's the number of rooms you have in your community, it was continuing to escalate, our market was good, when you have good occupancy rates, people are going to come in and build hotel rooms. What happens is as your supply starts to go up, then that demand is driving up, then demand will level off to meet supply, right? But what's critical is our supply has always kind of stabilized, but demand continued to go up until COVID, and then we took a sharp decline. So one reason it's very important for us to do this ramp back up tourism campaign is we know we've got pending demand for tourism, and we want to capitalize on that. Just who our, our customer is, this is information from our lodgings, our hotel properties here in the community. It's a mix of transient, which is leisure travel and business travel, and then group travel, but as you can see, over time, we've driven that leisure travel number is about the same, but the base is bigger. We're, we're bringing a lot more visitors. You had EJI open up in seventeen, late seven, February, I guess, of seventeen, five hundred thousand visitors in a two-year time period before COVID, but our group segment grew over time, and that's pushing that sports market that we've really worked with the Sports Commission on, also a more targeted effort on religious, fraternal, and corporate entities. We have tremendous potential to bring in diversity, equity, and inclusion corporate Fortune 500 company. Every Fortune 500 company in this country should come to Montgomery, Alabama, to hear this story, and that's a strategy that we're working in terms of sales. We, we went to a very strong earned media impact, y'all know this, you've been investing in this, the results have been incredible, just this year alone, we've had about six hundred thousand dollars worth of earned media. We had a travel writer in town, I don't know if any of you met him, the week of the announcement last week. He's a National Geographic freelancer, does a lot of work for major publications, and he was working on stories on recreation, and Whitewater Project was right up his alley. He was fascinated with the city, with our history, also going into recreation and green space development. That's a big part of the tourism market moving forward. And I, I want to show you this because it's important, and this is why we do this and why you invest and why we appreciate it so much. For every dollar that you invest in tourism, you get a return of direct ten dollars back to the county coffers. So, you know, one time, those of you that have been here a minute, remember, we used to talk about about five dollars return? Our visitor spending for a party of two now has doubled since we ran those numbers, so that number's ten dollars, and that's a conservative number on return for your investment. I want to give it to Ashley now, just to give a very quick update on our campaign, our visitor center is coming along, and we're very excited about that.
Ashley?
Hello, thank you for letting me come back, and I do, I'm, I'm really happy to be able to go from giving you an idea to actually seeing it happen. You'll, if you drive by down Dexter Avenue right now, you will see this, the storefront of One Court Square, and that is already started, and we are excited about that. Just in kind of an update, so you can know, the Journey Starts Here campaign is in full motion, so we are beginning to, you're beginning to start see, especially by the Fourth of July weekend, different things that are going to be going out. First, we started, of course, with this reopening campaign, with not only social media, but as well as visual trail systems that we're trying to put together to ensure that when people come here, for example, as she said, for AFITC, for Labor Day weekend, for any major time in which they're coming, that we make sure that we get them out and about and across the entire county, that's our goal here. And so as you remember, we're going to have these banners, you might see it coming up any day now, actually, the city has it, and they are dedicated to make sure that these go up and around the city, so we'll begin to see this in the next, really, couple of days, actually, everything's been ordered and it's here, to be able to go around the city and people be able to see, this Journey Starts Here campaign slowly begin to push itself through. As you can tell, there's going to be different shapes, you'll see there's different things that be able to do it, but it all relates back to exactly the Journey Starts Here, it all relates back to this campaign that we talked about back in April. It's ensuring that when they come here, we do our very best to get them to get all around the city, to maybe experience a part of Montgomery they may not have been in before, and that is the entire goal of this, but also is to get data, and with this data, we'll be able to actually say where people are going, where people aren't going, what we can do about that, how do we get into that community and ensure that people get over there, but data speaks, right? What gets measured gets managed, so we'll be able to measure that and be able to directly connect it and understand where is it, why aren't they going there, do we need more lighting, what's happening that we need to do to get people to move? And that's what we'll be able to get out of this campaign, and that's what we will get out of this campaign. And so we had talked about this, this comes up after you start seeing the banners, then the QR codes will start popping up. All of this is related to the campaign. All of this is related to the campaign where people will be able to get on their phone directly and see where they are, what journey started, what else they can do. And that is the biggest difference that we're going to do, is what else they can do. How do we get them further? How do we push them to the next location? And that's what this campaign will do, and this campaign is only scratching the surface for what we want, to develop into a true system that gets all around the county. So, we'll get deeper into that as well. And so, all of these kind of different things you'll see, representing different parts, not just civil rights, it's Alabama history, it's arts and culture, it's historical buildings. We'll begin to have these, and they'll see these, and it'll pique the interest of every type of tourist, and hopefully, every type of person Montgomeryan that's here too, to get them to learn and love more about their own place where they live. And so, if you go down there right now, you'll see the beginning of this. Really, all of this artwork is already up and around the building, and so that's what's really cool. And as we stated, we want it to be here because we need to be where the people are. We need to be able to connect with them while they're here. If they're going to be on Dexter Avenue, they're going to be around the fountain, we want to be able to grab them, explain to them, give them an experience, and tell them where else they can go beyond what they may have thought that they were doing when they got here. And so, this is scheduled to open on July 1st. We are excited that we were able to have these ambassadors. We've actually already hired three part-time ambassadors so far that are going to start, they actually already started, and they're helping us clean up some databases and get some things together. And those part-timers will be there for the summer. They're all, a lot of them are college students, we have one that just graduated from high school, and so, we're excited to be able to bring them in and create this opportunity for them because they're from here, and now they'll get to understand Montgomery in a different light as well. And then, lastly, we talked about social media before. That starts in July. That campaign is going to be pushed out to everybody who's in a 300 to 500-mile radius, telling them why they need to come to Montgomery, what experience they can have, what journey they want to go on, and how we can help them with that journey when they get here. And so, as we go through, as we go through, we'll begin to see, this is all a part of a larger plan. This is just the beginning. The goal is that we use this as a point to understand that, yes, we know what we're doing, we have the proof to show where people are going and where they aren't going, and then we're going to put a plan together to ensure that everyone feels an equitable opportunity to get business, to get tourists, and also, of course, to get locals out and about too. So, this is only the beginning, and as I begin to continuously come here and give you updates, I hope to be able to tell you even more that we have going on. But this six-month campaign will give us a lot of information for us to keep moving. So, thank you very much, and I'll see you all next time.
Ashley, you bring a lot of enthusiasm. You really give me hope when you speak, because there are some places in Montgomery that I have the privilege of representing that consider distressed communities. And so, I'm just wondering, would you all be bringing the same degree of enthusiasm back when you look at these places where maybe the lighting is inadequate? Are there other infrastructure issues that precludes these communities from benefiting, like the downtown area? Would you all be coming back with the same enthusiasm to help mitigate some of those situations?
This enthusiasm never stops. Of course, that is actually the part that I feel is going to be the most important for me, because now this is proof of concept, right? We said it, we see it, but now we'll be able to have proof to prove it. And if you can connect, as we know, tourism is economic development, and to be able to know that we can get people to going into a community that they may not have been into when we all know the story is over there too. There's opportunities over there with the growth that can happen if we can properly get that together. So, part of the plan is just that. Part of the downtown plan, actually, is just that. We'll be able to identify every city, I mean, every street that is not properly lit, right? That is not being activated. How do we activate that? What do we do? How do we get people to the next location? So, yes, that is, that is the entire purpose for me, is to ensure that those neighborhoods, if we know something, and we're working with you all and working with the city council, and we know that there's a tourism opportunity in this area, if only, right? What do we do to make that happen? So, yes, the goal would be, totally would be that we'd come back with that exact report to understand, okay, this is where they're not going, and this is why, what can we do about it?
Thank you. And, Anna, did you get the city support, the financial support from the city for this project as well?
Yes, sir.
They committed?
Mayor's commitment, and I don't know what source it's coming from, but yes, sir.
Thank you.
I confirmed that this morning. Quick, and I will let you go, I know we're running long, but Commissioner Sankey, you bring us exactly to this next point. The Chamber Foundation has commissioned a downtown plan. This is being funded by the business community, because we believe that the engine that can drive tourism, economic development, our tech economy, you must do what it takes to create an experience downtown for the visitor and the residents. Your point about marking signage, gateways, how we get people off the interstate, why isn't Centennial Hill marked? Why doesn't signage take you there? Why isn't it lighted so you can tell that story up the hill? Why doesn't the Civil Rights Trail connect from St. June in a meaningful way to downtown? Those are the things we have to address to really become a tourism hub, and it will help our citizens as well. Just a quick note about it, this is, again, a summary. The company is Interscapes Studio. They have done work all over this country, Philadelphia, Atlanta. They will give us not a, not a sit-on-a-shelf watercolor picture plan, they'll give us an action plan for downtown. We've got to be ready for the opening of Whitewater, and we will be ready with this, with signage and a tourism experience that's cohesive. It drives tech, our commuter base, we can pull back into Montgomery so much of the economic impact. And this is just a quick sample of the kind of actionable, they'll take downtown and look at it, literally, block by block, street by street. I think this is Makin's sample. And then they'll give you a 3D modeling map, and the county, I want to be very involved in this process, will probably get started in about three weeks. There'll be a stakeholder committee, want you guys involved every step of the way. And this is the kind of thing that will tell us where we need to drive retail, where should our small businesses go? How do we activate minority businesses along the Civil Rights Trail? Why don't we do that? Why don't we unite our efforts? So, what we're doing for small and disadvantaged businesses is fueling tourism as well. This will give us an intentional plan, and Commissioner Harris, you mentioned shovel-ready projects. Montgomery needs to be in a position where we have shovel-ready projects on a shelf all the time, so that when you all have funding, which right now you have an unprecedented opportunity, we're ready. We have priorities, we have consensus, and we've got some preliminary data and studies and drawings, so we can go get the money to bring it back to Montgomery County. So, I'm sorry I've run long, but appreciate your time so much. Any questions? Thank you very much.
We have three more visitors and several more items. You want us to just continue on? We'll hear from lobbyist Cassandra Crosby and Ron Drinkard.
Good morning. We're going to be quick, and over time, our rest, so we're going to be really quick. 2021 session is over, thank goodness, right? For the past 15 years, we have never seen a session that was so intense and so involved and so that we couldn't be involved as much as we wanted to be by being there. But we got our bill passed, which was a good thing. So, we are looking forward to 2021, and want to meet with you guys on a regular basis. So, we're going to talk about that today and get on your schedules, so we can get ahead of 2022. So, give special thanks to Charlotte Meadows, who sponsored our bill this past year, and Senator Barfoot, and special, special thanks to Kevin Lawrence, who actually held Montgomery County delegation together this year. So, we really appreciate them, you guys see them, give them thanks on your behalf. Ron, can you tell us a bit more about the upcoming ideas that we have?
To further what Cassandra just said, anytime you have an opportunity, please thank any member of the local delegation that you see, because they have been so helpful to us and so good to the county, especially in a session like this one, as Cassandra mentioned, when we couldn't even go up and down the halls as we normally would. So, we've got a great delegation out there. The next session is scheduled for January 11th, 2022. In order for us to be prepared for that, we would appreciate the opportunity to come back to you mid-September with some things that we're going to be preparing between now and then. To help us prepare for that, we would like to meet with each of you between now and July 15th. And if it's okay with y'all, we'll be giving y'all a ring Thursday or Friday of this week, after y'all have had a chance to look at your calendars, to maybe schedule a time that we can meet with you, whether it's breakfast, lunch, evening, at your office, here at the commission, wherever's convenient for you. But we would like your ideas on what you would like to see considered. Obviously, Cassandra and I are going to be looking at different things. We're going to focus on anything that might increase revenue, anything that we might be able to do to reduce expenses or improve the overall condition of our county. So, be thinking about those things, and again, we'll be giving each y'all a ring either Thursday or Friday of this week, after y'all have had a chance to look at your calendars. It looks like we're going to have a couple of special sessions, at least one. We've got to have one for reapportionment. That'll probably be in September or October. There's a high probability that we may see another special session in July or somewhere along in there regarding prisons, but neither of those dates have been set, if they would be, but we will have to have one for reapportionment.
Let me suggest, you know, to start early, even earlier than September, and talking to us about potential legislation or legislative agenda, we've been getting started off with that.
Yes, sir.
Last couple of years, and September might be a little late too. We can talk about it during this summer.
Well, we'll move it up to maybe August 15th to meet with y'all, and then...
If it gets earlier, the better. It gives us more time to think about it and to work on it.
Okay.
Know what we need to do, and get kind of...
Yeah, and we would like to meet with each of you between now and July 15th to just sit down with each of you on an individual basis to personally discuss any ideas y'all may have to get this started.
Ron, and Cassandra, that does sound good to get with us, but you all are the ones that are in the session every day, knowing what these other counties and stuff in Alabama, how they get passed, what they need to get passed, and what those pitches are in.
I'm sorry.
I say you all are in the session every day.
Yes, sir.
We are not there. So, you all are right, are real close to the people who are getting all these things passed. So, I think a lot of suggestion need to be coming from you all, because we don't monitor the other counties.
Yes, sir.
We just know what we can do by rules. We need you all to bring that kind of stuff to us. And I want to know, like, we had Pike Road in here today. How did, how did, where did we miss the vote where they could go and get what they needed from the legislator and the senator to get milers like that, and we had to fall short and wait to 2023 to get the money for the school board?
We had the same delegation that they have, and our delegation supported that.
So, we need to know why they do that and don't do that for us. We need to know those kind of things. That seems kind of bad to me. You know, by them being in the county, you know, we support education.
Right.
We didn't dare say if they couldn't take a vote or whatever, but still, I have that concern.
It's a definitely, it's a definitely good concern.
Like the two sides, two different sides of town.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Press board ladies?
I know, yeah.
Pike Road came to this commission, not in time, or way rule-like. And it passed unanimously. Montgomery County came to this commission, and the vote was three to two. It went on to the state legislature. The school board raised $75,000 to pay a lot of the business leaders of this community, raised a half a million dollars for that campaign. And still, the delay, the tax was fought, delayed implementation in the House. And in the Senate, we put a sunset on six of the mills, so we got to go back and beg again in a few years. Pike Road come through, and they come through sales, came to here today, and sailed through today. Something's wrong. What's good for the goose is good for the gambling.
That's right.
You know, if you call yourself, represent Montgomery County, you live in Montgomery County, you want what's best for Montgomery County, want what's best for all of Montgomery County. You can say all day long that money can't cure the problem. Go tell Martin Brok that. Tell them to give up all their money and see how well they do. Pike Road, deny them the money that you're giving them and see what, how well they do. Money helps. You know, so, there's only one common denomination, and we all know what it is, the big elephant in the room, it's race. That's exactly what it is. You know, we need to call it what it is, and we don't need anybody at that State House representing Montgomery County with that attitude.
There is a sunset clause for the Pike Road school, the exact same that...
Thirty years.
Uh, no, same exact...
Thirty years. This one is six years, Doug, you can't defend it.
And you...
This is six years on six mills. The whole thing got to be renewed in 30 years because they're going to take, well, it's not the same thing. They get their money, and to start in 2022, the money is delayed for Montgomery County. It's not the same thing, you can't defend it. You pushed it through this commission and voted against the Montgomery County.
I did?
You voted against at Montgomery County and pushed Pike Road through.
Okay, so, 5-0 vote is on the record, and you're saying I voted against it?
You voted against Montgomery.
I voted.
It was three to two.
The three to two to vote was the first vote that came out. The 5-0 vote was the second vote that authorized it.
That moved it to the state legislature was three to two. The first, the vote that could have killed it was three to two. That's the important vote. Don't try to defend it if you think it's on your vote. You know, this got to stop. I wouldn't say this, I wouldn't try to embarrass anybody or bring it up, but if you just, just let it go by, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing it up. But if you just let it, it'll keep happening, then please, there's absolutely no reason for it. There's no reason for it. There was no reason for me to vote against Pike Road, allowing the citizens of Pike Road the opportunity to vote on whether or not they want to improve their, there's absolutely no reason for me to do that, none. And I voted for it, proudly. It was a unanimous vote, and I don't have a problem with that at all. What I have a problem with is what happened when Montgomery County came to do the same thing, it hadn't had an increase since Jody was a baby. So, I, you know, that's, this is, this needs to be on your mind, it needs to be on the mind of every citizen in Montgomery who votes, who send these people to the State House to act this way toward the citizens of Montgomery. The ones who did it the most, it needs to be on your mind. There's only one common denomination in what happened in this, understanding and realizing and know who did it. It goes in the mind.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Funding education is very important, it certainly enhances the quality of life. But I just want to say this while we're talking about race and underserved communities, we still have folks in Madison Park that don't have sanitary sewer. They're still using septic tanks, and that's why I'm trying to make sure that before all the money from the American Rescue Plan is spent, that we at least start to have some discussion about sanitary sewer.
We're going to do that.
In terms of quality of life.
We're going to take that into consideration, but I wanted Cassandra and Ron to know what we, what we are angry about, what we're concerned about, not angry about, what we're concerned about, because I know that y'all have some friends down there that you can talk to, like your representatives and the senators. You need to let them know that we felt like it was unfair, and I'd like for you all to call their hand. We are not there to call their hand when this discussion is going on, but you all are down there, you know how we feel. And so, I just want y'all to be concerned about that. You can meet with us all you want to, but our concern still remains the same. We need to know how we can make some more money without raising taxes, but we want our constituents to be treated fairly. Okay?
Got you.
That's y'all margin of...
Got them, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Donna Leslie with Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority. There's a handout at your desk at each place on per topic.
Good morning, and thank you for having me here today. I will be brief, because I know we are running over. I wanted to update you on our progress with the Crisis Diversion Center, which is funded through the state legislator, through the Department of Mental Health, to keep our mentally ill folks in crisis out of jail and out of the emergency rooms. So, what you have on your handout, we have updates on the building, where we're at with that, some of the projects we're doing right now to try to divert before the building is... before the building is open and up and running. Some hiring updates, what we're doing with collaboration, and then I have invitation. So the building pictures that you see, this is the building we purchased. We just closed last week. It was a long process. We had to, the prior owners, their building was delayed. So we were hoping to be closed a couple of months ago, so that process is complete. We have all of our designs complete. We are going to be putting out bids by end of the week or beginning of next week for demolition and construction. We are going to be putting this building in compliance with joint commission standards. So that is basically your gold standard, your highest level of care. So we are going to have to be doing some additions to the building to be able to go into compliance. The budget, we are having to revise the budget due to having to adhere to those higher standards. We had to go back to the drawing board, update the budget. And so that's got to go through the board for us to be able to look at, you know, how that will impact our overall budget. What we're doing right now, this project is, is opening in phases. So the first phase is fully enforced where we have increased our mobile crisis response. So we're partnering with Montgomery Sheriff's Office, with Montgomery Police. We're starting in Montgomery, we're expanding to the other counties as we build up the staff. But the mobile teams are responding after hours now. So now, instead of when they call us, where before we could only say, okay, if you're in crisis, go to the emergency room. Our teams are going out, they're responding to that crisis. They're getting them into our beds without them having to set foot in the emergency room except to be medically cleared. So that's just started in May, and that's really exciting. We are also doing a lot of work with, we're trying to increase our co-response. So we've been doing that a lot, too, with the sheriffs and the police. So we're trying to collect data to show how effective that can be. With our hiring, we are continuing, it's, we're doing a job fair in July. We're going to be working with a River Region Health Fair at the end of this month to be able to take applications on the spot. We've been hiring, we continue to hire and bring staff into our current units, so...
How many jobs?
Total, we are hiring eighty-three new jobs for both the, the mobile teams, for the diversion center, plus to beef up our infrastructure. So we've already hired probably ten percent of that. We have six months left to continue to try to hire.
What kind of capacity do you anticipate for in-house, for people that have to do?
For the direct care, probably sixty of those staff will be the direct care on the, the units. And then the remaining twenty are to HR, PI.
How many, how many patients?
How many, oh, patients, we're going to be able to have, excuse me, both sides of the building. You'll have ten beds for the, the short-term temp ops. We'll be able to triage everybody that comes in. So when you look at the building, you've got triage where that's where we're looking at what's going on with them. If we need to observe them for twenty-three hours, we have ten beds there. If we need to admit them into the facility, we have sixteen beds there. We'll also be able to admit with our forty beds that we already have. And then we will have transfer agreements with Crossbridge and other hospitals in the surrounding.
This is so needed. It's great.
It's exciting, like, it's, it's, it's happening. So the other piece, we are setting up, we've been doing a lot of targeted collaborations where we're meeting with, you know, each stakeholder and each group that we're working with. We're now putting together Montgomery Coalition. This month, we're just trying to nail down a date that will include probate, the sheriff, the police, Jackson and Baptist. I would like to extend an invitation to the commissioners of, because now that we're at this phase, I really think it's important for, if you'd like to be more involved with just, just even to be present and kind of hear what we're talking about and kind of see boots on the ground, how this is going. The other event that we're putting together with the Department of Mental Health on August the fourth, it's going to be kind of a sneak peek, first look. It'll be at the center, there will be, you might need a hard hat. But we'll, we'll be showing everybody this is what we're actually putting together. And there will be legislators there, there will be all the different stakeholders. So that's the other event I would like to extend an invitation for you to be a part of. So we're, we're moving along. We are looking to have this building open in December. The mobile teams are in place now. We're going to continue to expand that and grow it as we work out all the kinks in that process. So I just want to again thank the county commissioners for the support and the, the city and the sheriff's office and everybody in here. That's been, I mean, this has been truly, it's just exciting to actually see it taking place, so.
Are you transitioning with your current patient population from the virtual visits to face-to-face?
Yes, sir. We'll be doing that this summer. We just, and it will probably be a blend. It kind of depends on what Medicaid does. So right now, we still do all of our mobile crisis, our shots. There's probably sixty percent of what we do is still face-to-face. But our outpatient visits are still remote. But over the next month or so, we will be transitioning back into outpatient, to in-person.
And one last question, quality of life issues. I know I take care of a lot of your patients, you know, in terms of their physical health. And a lot of them are just sitting at home and so forth. But they may be on a level where they could actually function at a limited capacity in the community. Do you all deal with quality of life issues like job placement, et cetera?
Absolutely. We have a, we have a few programs that address that. We have an intensive placement and support team. It's one of three in the state that provides individualized job placement and supports. And that team has been very successful with getting consumers to work where normally that population, three to five percent are working. We're able to get up to, on our team, forty to fifty percent of those are working. And they're sustaining jobs, and they're, they're jobs that those individuals, they're competitive employment. So we do that. We, we have had to close the day treatment programs, but we'll be looking to how we can open those up safely towards the end of the summer. But it's really about creating a meaningful day. So all of our, you know, case management, the job placement, the day treatment, we partner with the Department of Rehabilitative Services to, so that they can get some vocational rehab if they need to. So if there's individuals that you see that need that, just send them our way.
Thank you.
You might start in Montgomery, the state?
So, yep, and if you look in your handout, so it's, we have startup funds that go through the end of this year. And then the state is, that'll be renewable funds that we'll have in our budget every year. So our startup budget, it's what's going through the roof because of the cost of materials and having to adhere to joint commission. But those funds, the good thing is that because we have the startup opening now in December, we haven't had to hire all of the personnel. So that would have carved up a lot of the budget. So we can devote a lot of the startup funds to the building renovations.
This is something that I definitely support about this commission.
Yeah.
I support about something that's needed, so that is enough.
Thank you, sir.
This should have been done years ago, and it was, it was unnecessarily stalled. So obviously, the injection of state funding was a big help. But I thank you for your leadership in, in, in making sure this happened. It should have, it should have already been done.
Yes.
But it's exciting that it's happening now. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for the update. And I agree with Commissioner Harris. I'm in full support of when you need assistance from the commission. We want to be there for you.
All right, great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Next, we'll hear from Barbara Mays. And while she comes to the podium, I'd like to ask you to consider item number nine, an alcohol license application for a fest, a Latino festival.
Next agenda.
Thank you.
Every agenda.
Yeah.
Geez.
Good morning. Are you ready for me?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you all so much for giving me the opportunity to be here. I have some things to say that need to be said. There are some things in this community that need to be said. First of all, before we get started, I want to thank Ms. Daisy Phan. Many of you know Mrs. Phan. She's a resident of Montgomery and has really done a lot to help try to make a difference in this community. But unfortunately, oftentimes, when you come before city, county, state government, you get nothing but opposition. You have to wonder, does a person have to continue to beat their head against the wall to be allowed to try and make a difference in their community? I don't know how many times I've come before this commission, the city council, the governor's office, the state, and everybody else to address problems in this community that still exist. So for me, this is a reality check. Mr. Senke, Mr. Harris, Mr. Dean, Ms. Walk, Ms.?
Walker.
Walker, got that right. Mr. Singleton, I am asking each of you to do something that we have not done in this community before. And that is to give, before I say that, let me change in. Many of you have seen the movie, Carla Perry's Diary of a Mad Black Woman. Standing before you today is an angry, black Montgomery woman. And why am I angry? I'm angry because every one of us has sat back and allowed crime in this community to get out of hand. Every one of us. It's not the police department's responsibility. It is not the county commission or the sheriff's office's responsibility. We've got to be honest with one another and not be afraid to say the word "black" or the word "white." We act as if there's something negative about telling the truth. The truth has to be told. Systemic racism still exists in this community, no matter how much we try and cover it up and make it pretty and give a nice flowing speech. At the end of the day, those citizens who don't feel that they are being represented and given the opportunity in the city of Montgomery, they have a problem with it. And how do I know they have a problem? My phone never stops ringing. I don't live in every district in the city of Montgomery, but I am out helping people in every district in the city of Montgomery. I'm not being paid to do this. I do it as a volunteer. And I'm working with a nonprofit that we all worked together to start in this community called Sore Educational Village. And we know that all education does not come from a classroom or is not learned in a classroom. The sooner we open up our minds to, yes, there are some competent black folks in Montgomery that we overlook every day because we don't feel that they fit into the mold of what Montgomery is. I'm seventy-one years old. I have lived here all of my life, from the time I was a little girl up until now. I was hoping and praying that things would change for every Montgomery citizen. But it's changed a little bit. I can ride at the front of the bus, I can eat at the lunch counter, I can sleep in a hotel. But there are so many other little subtle things that are done on a daily basis at every level of government and in almost every business. Because people are afraid to stand up and say enough is enough. We're going to treat people fairly. We're going to do what's right by them without regard to the color of their skin. And the sooner we do that, the better off we're all going to be. I am working with an initiative, it's a two-year opportunity, to address the crime problem here in Montgomery. Unfortunately, the former chief of police is no longer at the city of Montgomery as its chief of police. We have devised a program. Mr. Harris, I want to make sure it does everything that we say it's going to do. I'm not trying to get money from the county, the city, or anybody else to buy me a new car. The one I drive drives just fine. I'm not trying to get money to buy a house. The one I live in is just fine. I'm not trying to pay people exorbitant salaries. You get a decent earning when you come to work with our organization. I don't even get paid. I serve as a volunteer. And we're coming before the county commission to ask for a two-year initiative program to address crime here in Montgomery. And it ain't going to take fifteen hundred dollars per commissioner to get it done because we're talking about addressing a county-wide problem, a city-wide problem. And if we can turn crime around in Montgomery, we can help other cities and states to do the same thing. I'm a member of the Alabama Conference of Black Mayors. I listen to the conference call every week and the issues that are so permeating predominantly black communities. I say logically, if black folks are creating ninety percent of the crime, the solution should come from black folks. You know, we can't expect the police department to handle issues in our community. I need to be able to go into a community and say, you know, your mama ain't going to be proud of you doing that. I bet you ain't too many folks in Montgomery be willing to do that. Walk, not just as walking the streets, but giving them a comprehensive reason as to why. And that's what we need from the county commission. We need the funding to help, and we're going to the city this afternoon and have the same speech, a come to Jesus speech, all over again with them as well. And the governor's office. Because if you don't address the crime problem, I love the idea of the whitewater. That is one of the best things that could ever happen in Montgomery. But if we allow crime to get out of hand as it is now, more and more every day, what good is that project going to do? Because in a year or so, the crime is going to be so high in this community, nobody's going to stop and visit it. It would have been a wasted investment. Now, are we willing to just take our dollars, just throwing good money after bad, if we don't address the real issue? And the real issue is just a systemic problem of race in this community. And I don't understand why people are afraid to talk about it. Black is black, white is white. We all got this, we are all God's children. And the sooner we realize that we are equal, there are some things that are different. You may have gone to a different school, have a higher degree of education, but that doesn't make you any better than I am. I'm just a frustrated, angry, black woman. And I'm not going to take a lot of your time. But I think there are some things that just need to be said. The business community, you guys have got to step up to the plate and help us to make quality of life issues better for every citizen in Montgomery. Mr. Senke, I know your district covers a large portion of West Montgomery. How many times has somebody come to you and said, I'm a businessman. Who can I contact to help us, have us address the crime issue in this community? We better get our heads out of the sand or continue to play this foolish game we're playing, and then it's going to bite all of us in the behind. So the only thing I will ask is that you please consider, everybody in here knows my phone number. If you don't, call me. My phone number is a Montgomery number, three, five, four, six, two, two, nine. Three, five, four, six, two, two, nine. I will meet with you at your convenience. I will be wherever you tell me to be at your convenience. Because we've got to get a hold of this problem. If not, none of us are going to have very much to call, to be proud of and call it home. It's going to be a very sick commentary for the citizens of Montgomery. We can paint this rosy picture out to the world on the TV. I've got a television background. We can hold a news conference and talk about how wonderful this project is or that project is or this school is. But until we get crime under control, what for what? Why are we even doing it? Our children are not going to be educated. Our community will not benefit economically. The water park or whatever other project is out there is going to go by the wayside because people are going to be scared to come to Montgomery, Alabama, like they already are right now. Many are. So we had better step up to the plate, not Barbara Mays. Barbara Mays is ready to go to work. We had better step up to the plate, the Montgomery County Commission, the city of Montgomery, the governor's office, and anybody else out there who can help to make a difference and make this happen in our community. I thank you so much for your time. There is one quick thing I want to share with you. I'm old and half can't see and a half blind, but okay, I can still read pretty darn good. I went to public school here in Montgomery. They taught me how to read, so I don't have a problem with reading. And many of us are familiar with this, a simple scripture out of the Bible. When it asks the question, what does the Lord require of thee? But to do justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with God. That is not a difficult thing to do when you get your heart and your mind right and you really want to do it. Thank you all so much for your time. Thank you to Mr., to the county commission for your time. I need your help. And if things get worse in Montgomery instead of better, I can honestly say it is not because Barbara Mays hasn't put forth a best effort. Thank you very much, and have a blessed day.
Ms. Mays, I'd like to invite you tonight. Our Mentors of Montgomery class tonight, we'd love to have you, six o'clock.
Thank you.
The multiplex behind Cranston Bow.
Okay.
Sheriff Cunningham's leading the training tonight.
Okay.
And we're trying to address some of these things you're talking about.
Fantastic. I look forward to it. I am going to the city council at five o'clock. Hopefully, I will be able to get there in time.
Okay, come by if you can.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Singleton.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mays.
We have one or two other items, an appointment of a Montgomery County Commissioner to the ACCA Legislative Committee. We can hold that over to the next meeting or...
I've had that call unless somebody else wants it.
That's you, ain't it?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll take it.
I vote for Dan.
Second.
Third, fourth, fifth.
So...
You know it's not anything good, is it?
That'll go on the next agenda. General information items, a board member appointments to the city-county public library.
Betsy Atkins would like to be reappointed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That, that's your appointment, isn't it, the Janice Franklin, is she coming back?
I got to check and see.
Okay.
We'll take that up next.
Okay.
And then finally, there's information from the Montgomery Cancer Center regarding their request for the Mobile Health Clinic. regarding their request for the mobile health clinic.
Florence and Chairman Dean, Elmore County Commission has given fifteen thousand to this. Their ask of us was forty thousand. I'd like to recommend that we give thirty today, if we can, from our joint designated balance, and then give ten more if needed at the end. I don't think they're going to need it, their fundraising's going very well, they're approaching all counties in the general area, and they're moving forward with that. And to, uh, address, one of the concerns was the, this particular mobile unit would go out and, and screen people, what would happen after that? And we're talking with Tommy McKinnon yesterday, I'm not at liberty to say, but I will say that is being addressed on the, also, what you had, Commissioner Sankey had asked, so. Chairman, I'd like to recommend we give thirty thousand today from the designated joint balance.
Uh, Ms. Jim, we see a number of people every day in the healthcare setting that really cannot avail themselves of simple diagnostic testing. So if you're screening for colon cancer, then who's going to pay for the colonoscopy? If you have a chest X-ray, well, there's some concern about a lesion, who's going to pay for the CT scan? So these are the things that I'm concerned about. The screening is fine, I don't know if we need the mobile unit necessarily to get it done, but I'm concerned about the follow-up care and the diagnostic testing that a lot of our citizens can't afford. And so I have a lot of folks now just waiting for somebody to have mercy upon them in terms of giving them necessary financial resources. I did, I spoke to Mr. McKinnon myself, and he did assure, well, he led me to believe that we might be able to do better than what we're doing. And so I suppose they will have some responsibility, their screening and coming up with, uh, positive testing, I suppose they have some obligation to, to follow up. The thirty thousand dollars, well, if it's something that we just need to do, I suppose we could do it, I'm not necessarily for it or against it.
Hey, keep in mind, Baptist Healthcare donates seventy million dollars a year and they do seventy million dollars worth of free services. And a lot of the services is up to the physician, not really the hospital. It's the physicians that have to perform the procedures to do the, so they are, they have been, like Jackson and other health providers in the area, doing their part to try to help. But again, I do agree with Commissioner Sankey in trying to help some people to get screened and find out you've got something, if you can't fix it, then, then, I don't know if I'd want to be found out, to be honest with you.
So what do we want to do, Commissioner?
I would like to do the thirty thousand now.
I agree with that proposal.
I don't have any, it's, it's, it's a good project, but the truth of the matter is that, you know, I, you, you go out and you get screened and they say you need something, you don't have the money to get it. Or, you know, you go out and you get screened and, you know, you got the money to get it, the only one place to go, and that's Baptist, so they're drumming up business for themselves. I don't know what they're doing with the other people that.
That's a very cynical outlook on it.
Yeah, well, but the truth, the truth is always like that. But, I mean, it's something we need, we, we need to have the ability to go out and screen people that can't come in and do it. But we also need a way to make sure that once diagnosed or once just determined that you need further assistance, there should be something in line for that, too.
And they said that they would, they were working, Commissioner Sankey asked them, and they said that they would work on.
I'll accept that, I don't, I, it's a worthwhile project, it's worth supporting.
Okay.
From joint designation?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And Chairman Dean, I had forwarded an email, Sheriff Cunningham had asked for assistance in funding a rock climbing, um, for the sheriff's department to use to take out the different events here in Montgomery and Montgomery County. And he had asked if we could support that in the tune of about nineteen thousand dollars. He, he would pay half through the sheriff's department, and ask the county commission if we'd pay half of that. So there was an email sent out on that.
Ms. Jim, I saw that, and I, I just have one question, and that's liability. I mean, who, who, who has done that research, and what does it open us up to?
Sheriff, you've done the research on liability?
Little kid climb up there and fall and break his neck, who's going to pay for that?
Everything is certified by the county, and we're trying by, uh, yeah, every year to do our certification for it.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know, but accidents happen.
Yeah.
Who, who, what's?
I think we could probably handle that through a waiver, we could strike a waiver for him to sign, or they're, or, you know, sign. At least try it, I mean, waivers are, a lot of times, we're the favorite, we're written on. But if he at least got to try.
How do we handle, like, the sheriff's rodeo, the fishing rodeo, if somebody was to fall in the pond, the same thing, right? Okay.
Yeah, there's certain things you just can't waive, certain things you just can't, uh, can't accept the, uh, the risk on, you know, because nobody climbed that wall thinking they're going to fall and break their neck, so you can't waive that. That's, that's the question.
Come on, you saying something to lawyers?
We have insurance to cover.
Well, you would have to check on that.
Let's, let's make sure that we, we, we cover it.
They should.
And allow bill that might arise out of it. Because that's, that's the whole thing, you know, these, those.
We are self-insured for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, so we would be, we would, they would, I think, a lot of people, before it went to our access.
Those things are fun, but they're, they're kind of like those skateboard things downtown, they, they're dangerous.
So, so where are we?
No, I got.
We'll handle it, we'll leave it for, we'll get back with the, um, we're going to still move forward, we'll handle all of this, we'll take care of it, come back, you know, keep you off and everything, but we still need to move forward.
So we'll talk about it in the next meeting, we'll make a decision in the next meeting, so. But please move forward, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
I said, please move forward, because I'll support it myself if we don't do it jointly.
Oh, you'll take care of it all at the end, too?
No, no. I'll support the project.
We'll all support the project if it's not going to expose us to excessive liability.
Well, we have it at Whitewater, so what's going to happen at Whitewater? We got rock climbing at Whitewater.
There's so much in between us and Whitewater. There's so much between us and Whitewater, but that's a diff, that's not apples, that's not, it's apples to oranges, Doug, he's talking about buying something. We're talking about buying something and exposing kids to it.
Well, I don't think, again, we'll, we'll proceed on, but I.
It's different than Whitewater, believe me.
Okay.
We'll have liability insurance, the operators will have liability insurance for Whitewater. We have liability insurance for this, that's fine, too.
Okay, fine, what you got next?
I believe that covers everything.
Okay. I, I need to put a thousand dollars for New Beginning Educational Center, educational center, New Beginning Educational Center. We've already, we've done something before, so if you look up the paperwork, it's, there is a witness there.
And that's from?
Down in Kalamazoo, yeah. Allen Brown, we know Allen Brown, you have an Allen Brown.
Is that from, you're designated?
Yes, ma'am.
That's everything from the information system.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, uh, Ms. Donna Marietta is here from McCulah, and I, I got an email from her last night, I was, didn't have time to respond to it. If, with your.
Donna, did you respond, did you sign up on?
I signed, just at the end of your agenda.
I think she wanted to me to consider a request, if, if it's okay with the commission at this time. Are you able to tell me what it costs?
For a new round?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, sir, fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, let me, uh, give me some time on that one.
Choked him up.
That, yeah, that new round.
For us seniors, for, yes, for our, and we just started a new round through our abilities to do so in your district.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you have some citizens who would like to show us a good news, um, report update from the state, what we do for seniors in Montgomery, we're able to.
She's asking you, Ms. Jim.
Yeah, 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 beginning of the formal session.
Okay.
Yeah. Just, and just at the beginning of the formal session, we'd like you to come up.
Yes, that's it, uh-huh.
Okay. Okay, anybody need a break?
No, let's.
Let's go.
A long one, yeah.
Okay. Where's, uh, Sheriff Cunningham, will you come to do the invocation for us, please, sir? And, uh, pledge will be done by Commissioner Walker.